I now call to the March 19th, 2020 meeting of the New Caney Elementary School District Board of Trustees. Current time is 6:06. Let the minutes show that we're in a warmest presence with all members in attendance. Please rise to the indication given by Ms. Harrell. Please stand standing to pledge allegiance and honor the Texas flag by Mr. Trout.
Thanks, Val. While we come to you tonight at an uncertain time, time in our faith is being tested and we ask that you strengthen that faith. We look to you for guidance and to calm our fears as a nation. Help us to make sound decisions that benefit our community and our students and our educators. Be with our precious partners and our soldiers who are abroad keeping us safe. Forgive us of our sins and all glory goes to you. Be Jesus' champion.
What is it to reply when we cannot have a state fair? To do what one, one two three, 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 one two three. Our Texas flag, our Texas people, we see these things. One two three, one two three, one two three. Item two on the agenda is open forum. We have no one signed up for that, so we're going to move into item three. On the agenda is closed meeting. Board will now meet closed meeting under authority of Texas Governor Code 5511074. Personnel matters, Governor Code 5511071. Return a consultation to Governor Code 5511072. For deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease or value of rural property. Any action as a result of closed session, especially will take place after board reconvenes an open meeting. The current time is 6:07. According to this closed meeting is 6:42. And now reconvenes an open session. I inform the agenda, consideration of all out of state trips and career and technical education competitions at the national level. We're going to run a shopper.
Good evening. Okay, the um, we can't see for technology. Technical education students participate in multiple competitions that qualify them for to go to nationals. And so because we're so successful there, and so what we would like to do is ask for your approval for any student that goes out for nationals from now until the beginning of next school year to travel, let's say. And so that when they're getting tickets and things ready, then they can go ahead and get that. Sometimes the board meetings, if they were notified, it doesn't follow up, so. So we're asking that you approve travel to the national level for our CTE students from now until when school begins in the fall.
We've also set the parameters of that chapter. One of the parameters would be if the event occurs, if things continue the way they do in the past, we'll take each trip and study it. If we're back in school, we're not going to travel if we're closed. So we have some parameters in place, so it's not automatically, yeah, you're going. It's permission, if we do meet those parameters, that we can give them permission to go, that's what we're saying.
And you'll continue to be up in every month on students and that form out, and our plans are there.
All right, are there any other questions or further discussion?
No.
So your motion to approve all out of state trips, career, and the technical education competitions at the national level.
Yeah.
Motion has been moved and seconded. There will be no further discussion. A vote will be taken. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, motion approved. You guys will have to quit this room.
Just go make sure that she can hear you.
Appreciate you.
We got too much to get through for that. Item five on the agenda is superintendent's report.
Let's start off with Mr. Cowan.
All right, we started the process of rebranding our middle schools. Talked to y'all about that, getting them their own identity. That way we drove that flexibility. Now, right now, obviously, the red side of town, they're all Spartans, middle schools lose out to down their Eagles. So we went through the process to select new colored mascots for all four middle schools. Woodbridge and White Oak will implement these, but they're ready for August 2020 start. Again, rationale how that is, hoping that the new week at Woodbridge, so Bonn has something to be used, so that's why those two are first. Keeper Crossing, new campus will open up in '21. So those two schools, Keeper Crossing, New Caney Middle, those new mascots and colors will be implemented in '21, '22. But that's how the implementation goes. So what we did is we had a bunch of student input, staff input, works and recommendations. Those recommendations were brought to a smaller committee of students and staff. They came up with their top three. We vetted those through cabinet, said, y'all, those are good, and they're crazy. We sent that back out through laser fish, so that way the current sixth and seventh graders on each one of those campuses could vote on what they wanted. And so without further ado, I'll tell you what our middle school mascots are called. So, White Oak, the vote was that they are going to be called the Warriors, and their new colors are black and gold. Woodbridge Forest, they chose the Falcons. Their colors are light blue and dark gray. Keeper Crossing, they chose to be the Kodiaks, light blue and black. New Caney Middle School, they wanted to be the Sharks. Their colors are navy blue and silver. That has been ran through Mr. Seib's filters for our uniform, as well as Mr. Scherer when it comes to band. So again, we'll start implementing that from, you know, once you walk around those campuses, you'd be shocked at just how many places those colors, that logo, everything pops up. So we will start the process of making sure that, you know, the Spartan, the Eagle stuff is as dominant as needs to be, and the new things are implemented. And again, that's give us flexibility moving forward and figure patterns and all that nature. So those are better middle schools. The first two coming out will be White Oak Warriors and Woodbridge Forest Falcons. So look forward to seeing how that process rolls out with all this looked on the campus. Dr. Powers' team, they'll be responsible for working with the campuses for the branding, for, you know, what does the official logo look like? You know, dealing with trademark things, all that, so that way we own the logo of all the good intricacies of what they do so well from a branding standpoint. So, there you go. That was their vote.
Tom, you said we're in our middle schools.
Any questions?
Process.
All right, we're seeing plenty of it.
There's a little something we'll talk about too tonight. What we've got, obviously, is some unprecedented things that we're, it's been thrown around a lot. I think we've got an unprecedented thing, folks up here and folks up here, that are, all of our hearts and minds are in the right spots for our kids and our community. And so Paul's going to start off by just sharing kind of the general county overview, the information that he's getting from his role. I'll dive into our incident management structure, I think we've been working on some communication things. And then after I get done, the largest part of this is going to be with Michelle about how we continue the structure moving forward. So she's going to address that. And then each individual member of cabinet will speak to their particular lane in the district as far as things they've got going on, continuing operations and what that looks like. So I know we all probably have thousands of questions from thousands of people. Hopefully, we can answer some of these throughout our presentation here. But if you think of anything, you know, right now, ask us and, you know, we're not a great set, we don't know, there's a lot of that right now, but we're working hard and we're going to get the correct answers as soon. So with that said, Mr. Matt Childer, go for it, sir.
As far as information from the county and the state, we're looking at about 143 confirmed cases in the state of Texas with three deaths currently. And as I say, about an hour ago, the Montgomery County Public Health updated, we have our eighth case in Montgomery County, in southeast Montgomery County. I'm in constant contact with you.
We're going to either speak up or turn it up one. I can barely hear you. We're going to do one of two.
All right, I'll try to speak a little bit louder and then maybe we can.
Turn up the sound a little bit. Paul's put the lights on.
Does that sound any better?
Much better. Yes.
Back up a little bit here. So I got to say, from the state perspective, we've got 143 confirmed cases with three deaths. County perspective, we've got eight cases that are positive as of about an hour ago. Two of those cases are in southeast Montgomery County. I'm in constant contact with the public health, I've got the PIO speaking those informations. There's not a confirmed case that we don't get information on. A couple of us are getting that information at the same time, as well as the county office of emergency management. We're in constant contact with them and trying to understand what their response is and helping provide that response. So I'll kind of step out, because that's essentially what we're going to go over with the rest of this presentation and be here to support everybody else as they kind of come up with their needs.
Though I just wanted to give you a little bit of the history of what we've done. You know, there were meetings before on the 13th, but obviously that was a big day, that's when we said they were shut down. That was when, that's when communication started, started internally, when things started happening, conversations, what does distance learning look like? What do we know for PEA that day, or what that should look like, all those kind of things. We came back on Tuesday, kind of formally met, said what this is learning is going to look like. Again, Ms. Schotter's going to elaborate on that tremendously here a little bit. This morning, our IMT planning team met, and, you know, that is, that is the structure we're using now. All the people on that team have been DIMC stream, national incident management system, believe me, that's what it stands for. So that's kind of operational mindset we're under right now. It's a little bit different than typical school operations, but our purpose is to generate a plan of how do we operate during this time period we're in right now. So just some communications, just letting y'all know what went on, and how. On our website, I know there's a drawing, sorry to let make us on our health services page. Of course, we had our district closure announcement, Ms. Nino's health service, that, that was a pop-up message on the website, very other forms of media. Probably our most effective, everybody gets it method, is to that district call-out system. That way we ensure people are getting the communication, if they're not on social media or emailing and like that. So the, you know, just basically, we had a phone call to say, hey, we're aware. At that time, there's a lot of districts putting things out, and there's a fine line between putting out too much and making your public become numb to it, and not putting out enough and making them wonder, okay, what are they doing up there? And so that was one of those phone calls that we felt it was not even to say something, just left it on a paper on top of it. Again, this will close your phone call, and then the follow-ups will close your phone call that we're at today. So some of the public events at the 13th meeting, and this is, you know, y'all are aware of this. You know, started on March 15th at midnight until March 22nd at midnight. You know, that was extended, all traveling activities, when we're shut down, we're shut down, nothing's happening. We communicated that to our church abuse in our facilities, any sort of sports organizations, or normal practices on the field, anything like that. We are closed, we are closed. We have up there the community governor to reflect on that. But just like I said, when school's not in session, I can just talk about the field trips, we're not doing anything as long as that goes. The feeding program has proven to be very successful, this is the latest statistics on that. 16th through 19th, over 2,000 meals have been served. The breakfast and lunch windows are up there. We are adjusting that, just thinking felt that was, it was good, and we consolidate that into one extended period of time from 8:30 to 11:30, so we hope that was fine. Our two sites, New Caney Elementary, sort of middle elementary, see total, 210 breakfast meals at New Caney, 247 breakfasts of sort. Those lunch meals are really starting to crank up, you know, we've had over 1,000 served at both campuses. First couple of days, we're looking for a couple hundred people around lunchtime, now we're at over 300 easily at both locations as far as getting these meals. So our intention right now is to continue doing that. There is some PEA guidance and USBA guidance as far as reimbursement, self-availability, you know, the kids have to be in a car, get the meal, all that kind of stuff. But we're sort of good at that information, and again, you know, getting the food for the people that need it in a timely fashion. So that's been a very, very successful program.
What is this serving? Is it like a box?
It is a cold meal, like in a bag, it's not a hot meal. I know it's usually like a sandwich, you know, fruit, you know, some sort of. It's like a sandwich.
Does it have ham sandwich? Yeah, it's a grab. Apples, carrots, and there was a milk.
And then kind of talked about while ago, there's a different structure for the way we operate right now. So I just wanted to let y'all know who are the people behind the scenes juggling all this up for you guys right now. Got my hair starts before, you know, a lot of terminology there. But really, the main thing that we're going to focus on is everybody on this forum and who's not on this forum, the lower levels is here to support Ms. Schotter and her efforts as the operations section. She, you know, the main event right here is making sure our kids are continuing to learn, making sure our district is providing the high level of quality instruction that we do on a day-to-day basis during this event. So we're all here to help her, whatever she needs, everybody on that sheet, everybody that's not on that sheet. We're going to need to support that to make sure our kids get what they need instructionally. This next one, you know, there's not going to be a pop quiz on reading that or anything. There, that's the methods and the madness of who's doing what for Ms. Schotter and her team. You know, again, hopefully it's reality, I can go back and tell you, like, there, there is people working behind the scenes more so now than they may even be on the regular Monday through Friday to make sure kids are getting instruction. They're basically retooling the school year in about two or three days for our way instructions delivered. So there's a lot of considerations in there, a lot of different roles in there to just address all of our various student needs. So while she may be one lone ranger on that big chart, she has a whole host of people behind her making sure that instruction is going to continue in the district. I just wanted to share that with you. Our incident action plan, basically, you know, the binder that we're going to have, we're all up with this thing. Our operational period, this is the time that we set aside, we say we need to accomplish all this in this amount of time. Right now, that is until we plan on opening schools back up on the 20th. Nobody knows that for sure. We just know that's what we're under right now, that could change. But we have to, for this structure to work, we have to have a defined start endpoint. And so we said our endpoint would be April 17th. And like I said, it's anybody's best guess on me, that's going to change, see what. So we base all that on objectives, and one of the big overlying objectives is our job is to be ready to welcome our students and staff back when we start school. Whether that's April 20th, or whether that's August 17th, 2020. So none of these objectives are undertaken or worked through that would jeopardize us being able to start school back up for our community and for our students. So just kind of, again, a filter to look at these certain. You know, we need to schedule what's going on during an operational period, so people know where to be when. And it's a video conference and public communications, including internally. And formalizing that plan with Dr. Powers, that way he knows what message he should go out to, what group, when, and how, and what platform. The distance learning plan, that's, again, very robust, Christie's going to elaborate that a little bit. The feeding program, very important. And then, you know, as always, our top priority is, you know, we're going to make sure our people are safe during this, during this period. We're not going to put our people in harm's way, you know, kind of the, how we equated to the Trump philosophy, America first, was New Caney High School first. And our people are here to serve the students and staff of the district first. So we're going to make sure our people are safe and everything that they do during this operational period. Where are we getting our information from? Paul kind of alluded to that. Lord knows, there's a plethora of it out there, and probably, but one of the most challenging things of this is, what is credible? What do we believe? What can we act on? What should we just, you know, throw off to the side? So these are what we're relying on right now. Texas Department of Health and Human Services, Montgomery County, Homeland Security, Public Health, TDA. You know, we're kind of filtering through all that to what's relevant to us and school environment. And of course, you know, the overarching of all that is CDC when it comes to, you know, example tonight, you know, our social distancing and things like that. That's the, kind of the last part that I have. Like I said, I'm going to kick it off to all of our cabinet members right now. And so Christie's going to go over the plan, I think they'll have a handout as far as what some things are, they constructionally. And then we'll just kind of pass it off around the room as far as what's, what everybody else is talking about.
Okay, so our biggest challenge. I want to give this back to you. Okay, so our biggest challenge this week was, you know, we're really fortunate in our district that we have a lot of subscriptions to really high-quality online resources, and that we're a one-to-one district. And so what that means is for our second through 12th graders, we have a device for this check out system. And so this week, Kevin took kind of right to back end, asking, we'll see if we have all the possibilities and things that, that we can offer for our students. And so the thing that we have come up with is, is inside of you, so I want to explain a little bit. Our digital learning team has been working along with our specialists on this, this one pager, if you have English or Spanish. That we're going to push out tomorrow online, and we're going to push it out through Canvas, which is our learning management system. And so for our secondary kids, that's not a big deal, they use Canvas every day, every class, they're used to that, that's how they, they get a lot of their information and they turn their assignments in. For our elementary kids, who we don't necessarily really want to be on the term of all day, it is a little bit of a learning curve for them. And so tomorrow, our teachers are going to be calling home, our elementary teachers especially are going to be calling home, checking in on kids, talking to parents. First of all, just seeing how they're doing, but also checking to see what kind of activity they have on the internet and what their needs might be as far as devices. And so we're going to compile that list and then we can get that to, to analyze. As I said, we have proverbs for our second through fifth graders, for those to stay at the schools. And so, okay, those stay at the schools. And so if those are needed, we're going to be ready to get those out to our students. And so we're going to collect that information tomorrow. Our teachers are also going to talk to our parents about our distance learning plan. So this resource will be up for a while, just, most of these are not the free versions of everything that you see on Facebook and all social media, and how people are pushing all this free stuff. These are resources that either we purchased or that have been vetted by us, that we know are high-quality. And so at the bottom of this sheet, there are directions for how kids, what, where they go, either through the clever portal or Canvas portal, and where they can find these resources. So like, Lani Schotter will be able to click into Canvas and be able to see these resources, and her subscriptions will be there. So all of our kids will have specific resources by grade level, starting next week. So our specialists have been working with a few of our teachers from every grade level, our superstars. We asked them a couple days ago to, to help us to get those resources together. We're going to put the very, very best out there that we have, and all of our teachers were anxious to help, and so that doesn't surprise me. So we're pretty excited about that. We do have the capability to Zoom conference for classes, but there are, there will be instances where teachers could talk to the whole class at one time, and there's some activities that they can do there. For secondary, you also have the learning protocol for secondary instruction in front of you, and that gives you a little bit of the details of what we're talking about. Like I said, our secondary kids use Canvas, our teachers are really skilled at it, they know. Some of them don't do it, don't push everything out through Canvas, so it's going to be a switch to where you don't have a blended model as much, to where, you know, all of what you're doing is online. We're also hoping that there will be some discussion boards and some times when kids can interact for, for these classes. I also talked to Ms. Monroe because people being quarantined, that's very stressful for a lot of parents and a lot of kids. And so we don't want our social emotional learning to stop either. And so there'll be some social emotional learning videos and discussion questions and activities that parents can do with their kids. And so those activities will be in there too. Not everything that's going to be in Canvas is digital. There are just plain activities that parents can do at home with things from their kitchen or whatever. And so there's more details on this page, it's three pages long. More details about all of the people that are in place to help and getting set up for kids. If you look on the second page, you can see a list of all of these classroom teachers that are helping, all the instructional coaches that are helping. And those are all the people that have volunteered extra time, that are going to work really, really hard to make sure that everything in the shadows is on. And then secondary is going to continue on with the courses that they are currently doing. So, do any of you have questions for me about that? I'm sure you do.
About students who don't have internet.
Okay, so tomorrow, that's going to be something we have to problem solve, because, so tomorrow, when our teachers are calling to talk to the families, we're going to gather that information, we're going to show it out with Mr. Rice, we're going to come up with some solutions for that. I don't know what that looks like yet, and so we'll have to see. According to our R.I.P.A. survey that we do, y'all know we do it, we, at first, they do twice a year, and lately, in the last two years, we've done it in the fall. Our data came back that 85% of our homes have internet accessibility, and then 97% of our teachers have Wi-Fi at home. And so we'll just have to get together at that and see what we can do. We definitely have the devices.
For like students without proverbs, in the lower.
Okay, so if we call, so when we start calling tomorrow, if we have students, we talk to a family and they don't have a device, that information's going to be shared with Mr. Rice, he's going to contact them, and then we'll have a way for those families to come and pick up the devices that they have on.
What I've heard is that, like, I have four kids in school, we have one family laptop, we're having a hard time getting all of the kids on at the same time.
So we'll have.
Even though they have a device, it's something helpful to be able to get their.
Yeah, so we'll have those available.
Are the Zoom classes going to be like on a, I wasn't sure clear, it was like, may the teachers to do those, or if it was going to be at their discretion, or?
If what?
The Zoom classes that the teachers will be doing, will those be like, all teachers will be doing that, and the secondary a bubble, or will it be at the teacher's discretion?
It'll be at the teacher's discretion, and some of that, instead of being live video conferencing, some of that will be recorded.
Okay.
And so they'll push out videos of, and start the things that they need to teach directly. Some of our teachers may push out video messages explaining things. Most of what we're doing this next week, especially for both secondary and elementary, is going to be review, because we feel like that's, that's necessary. We just ended the nine weeks, it's kind of a click bread, we just ended the nine weeks, report cards will go out through Skyway tomorrow. And so at first, we're going to really work on reviewing and not introducing new skills. For elementary, we're probably going to stay there for a while, reviewing. For secondary, we do not put our kids at a disadvantage. And if I have a student that's taking algebra II, I don't want them missing nine weeks of instruction and then going to calculus or the next, the next class. So we have to be careful there, we want our kids to be in the best position possible, so we want to push out high-quality instruction, so our kids don't get gaps. And for our kids that already have gaps, the gaps don't get wider. So, so we're going to be really targeted about what skills they need to continue on and really focus on those.
This is just like a suggestive, I mean, when the kids come to school, they're at school, we can have them do grades and things like that. Distance learning, you're never sure that the kid's going to log on. Distance learning, you're never sure that the kid's going to log on, it's going to do it, this is a requirement, they're going to be graded, are we just trying to keep the gaps rolling?
So we're going to strongly encourage them. I think a lot of them with their relationships with their peers and their teachers and knowing what's going on in class are going to want to participate, but after the summer, I'm saying grades are requiring them.
Is TEA requiring any kind of attendance or?
Okay, so that has changed, did it last day?
Today.
It has changed.
It'll always change tomorrow.
It's changed almost daily. And we did get some guidance this afternoon that I haven't had a chance to really go through yet. We got it about the time we packed it in. So I'm really watching that because there have been waivers, there have been waivers that have been sent out and attestations where we have to certify that we're doing these things to get credit and to get ADA. And when we ask TEA, when Paul and I, or everybody from across the state, they're continually asking the questions about credit and ADA and questions like that. And did you get any?
There's more documentation.
Yeah. So every day, Mike Rat said, hey, we're going to get that to you. I think, I think they're trying to figure it out too. So we don't have a definitive answer on that.
This is the latest thing, documentation of instruction, close but conducting instruction, close but preparing instruction are closed temporarily or the ways that they coded in to reporting system. Basically, they're saying, it'll continue to be discussed. So now they're, they're channeling it in three different ways to code it. Not sure how on that.
And that's what I did, that just came out this.
That came out as we sort of.
And so also another assignment to have.
Let me just add, it says, if you cannot make the instructional pivot, you will run into trouble with school finance. If you cannot make the instructional pivot, in other words, going to this type of instruction, you're going to have financial issues.
There are lots of districts who don't have.
There's a lot of documentation associated with that too.
So can I?
This is, we get this hourly, we get it daily.
So I do want to say that without going to instruction continues, all of our timelines for special ed.
Can I mention one other thing? Sorry. One other thing that's relevant to that same conversation. Every day you're close with conducting instruction, you just assume your minutes. What documentation should you maintain? TEA is trying to make this as light as possible, but some kind of check needs to happen. You need to keep some kind of documentation, maybe grade books or small sample of student work. Oh, live learning will probably retain any required documentation. So yes, we are documenting this because we're obvious that TEA will want to see some of this.
Well, there was, there was at the bottom of one of the waivers that said TEA would audit when this would include co-reparations and checking on instructional minutes in the home. And so there have been, every day.
Every day.
Yeah, every day, so true. And I understand that they're probably trying to field a lot of questions too. But our, our timelines, without instruction continues, all of our timelines on special ed, essentially all of those things are in, are in place. And so there are services that we will not be able to provide, but we'll provide compensatory services in the summer more than likely. Because let's see, it has to be, so far the guidance we've got is it has to be face-to-face. There are certain things that have to be face-to-face, so we'll work, we'll work on those as they come about.
Have we defined like for teachers, they need to be online for certain hours of the day?
Okay, so we're going to ask for our teachers to be available during the school day, during the school hours. We also are asking, asking them if they get emails before noon to make sure that they answer those before the end of the school day and if they get an email in the afternoon to make sure they get certified the next day. Just as a framework, we hope that they'll be really quick about that. Our teachers are amazing and they're, they're already like ready to get started. So we just wanted that guideline in there and we are going to ask, ask for a certain number of parent contacts a week, but we aren't allowed those.
So the teacher's going to be calling parents a few times a week. It's a lot on those teachers. When you say available, does that mean they have to be like logged into something or?
No, just available to answer their email. Some of them will be, some of them will be maybe Zoom chatting with five kids, reading for a book. So, so they're not going to be in front of a camera for eight hours a day. It's not going to, it's not going to slow down. So, but they will be providing support, you know, computers calling saying, I don't have a teacher who's too mad. They might be on the phone with a mom or conversing with a mom, you know, giving her some guidance on delivering instruction. And so that's going to be part of their world too.
I would say this too. TA has recommended that we change our dialogue from not being closed, being closed with a different method of instruction. We're still working with the buildings are closed. It doesn't mean that the staff is off. So it's, it's a different type of approach, but they've really recommended to quit, to stop using closure, we're closed and describing more, we're delivering instruction a different way.
I agree. And we will have, we will have paper copies and assignments available for, for those who want them and for those who don't have access and no way of getting it. So we're, we're going to try to cover all of our bases so that we, we are continuing to instruct and help our kids grow in as many means necessary. So that's the thing that my team is working on too.
What about specials, teachers who teach hard music?
Okay, so what we determined on that is on our campuses where we have the concerning leave or we go learn from stuff that, that's just maybe been in there one day, we're going to use our special teams, special teachers to check in on that classroom because our music teachers, our P.E. teachers, our P.E. specialists, they have relationships with a lot of, all the kids in the school. And so we're going to utilize them where we see those holes and where we, where we need to fill that in. And so on every campus, we have permission to leave or, you know, little things like that, so.
I was going to say the graduation, here's graduation.
We're not sure yet.
I don't know yet.
Sure. Didn't the gov, didn't they wave to requirements for the school here?
They did. And so one of the, so this is one of the things they keep changing, so I can tell you what I think I know right now, Paul, if you heard me, you need to, but one of the examples they gave us, if a student is taking English two, there is no English two EOC, which typically you have to pass to graduate. And so their bias right now is that since we don't have the EOC for English two, as long as they pass the class, they're going to get credit for passing that EOC. That's what they told us so far. And so what will happen is this little pandemic situation is going to affect all kids that are at my school for years to come because some of them aren't going to have had any English EOC or whatever. And so all the way up until they graduate, we're going to have to have committees determine that they got credit for an EOC because they passed the class.
Maybe that's the Lord's way of getting rid of standardized.
Yes.
On the Chromebooks, will they be available to the students who currently have the sign like your pre-K through second or will it just be that, or pre-K through first or will it just be second and up that'll have access to?
Yes. Yeah, we, we have, we have an approach for every student, second through 12th grade that they've had, I don't know for how many, it's a 2,000 or about 2,000.
It's probably up to speed on that. I have seen some internet providers offering a complimentary service for kids or maybe it's.
They've reached out to a lot of internet providers to, to see if we can get assistance there. And as of today, I don't think that we have.
The only one that we found was AT&amp;T's like waiving all their data limits right now. And so if you want to turn your phone into a hotspot, you have AT&amp;T. But that's just, that's just one provider that we've reached out to that we can confirm that you have, you can get a lock through, through that way to that third.
We raised. And we checked into hotspots and they're on back order. I remember when.
Six months, yeah, at least six months.
So hotspots are on back order. So we are really trying to, to help our kids get what we need in their days within our gates or titles and that's that, so.
For buses still like, like by hotspots?
Yes, should be, because they're, they're. And, and Vince said on the buses, really, unless you're sitting on the buses, it's not like you can go up to the everybody parking. Everybody's got.
I thought about that, we can just park bus lanes.
You know, they can lean up. I already called them. Good, but it's not a, not a matter of.
We have 22.
What if you put one forward?
Yeah, we can, we can encourage them to congregate on the bus.
What about our super frauds, like the life skills and?
Okay, so Sarah Chase is working on that. So what will happen with our life skills kids is we actually have a curriculum called Unique. And so, yeah, that's online. And so for our life skills kids, our applied skills kids, we, those teachers are going to reach out to those kids just like our classrooms and they're going to work with the parents on that curriculum. And then for our, our cases kids, our rise kids, Miss Chase has already gotten her team, they've got concerns together, they know they're going to be mailed to their homes. So they're going to have very specific things to work on that align with their IPs so that we're continuing to grow in those areas. And so for special ed kids, it's going to be a little more specific what gets sent to their house. They can still do the things that they know align, but we'll still be working towards their goals on their IP.
How does this affect Infinity? Would they love Star or does this?
So the last thing we heard is when Star's completely online too, so Infinity will also be.
So they'll just continue to have.
For those teachers will do the very same thing. They're going to call, check on them, you know, they're used to doing that too. So that's going to get a lot of support. Yeah. Do you have questions?
Yes. So scenario is going to be asked, so I know you don't know the answer, but I'd have to ask it. So we have a child that's a singer. Maybe he had a 69 or 68 going into this six weeks. How do we handle him not, or her possibly, I know this is a difficult question, how do we handle the situation of possibly not being able to serve in their school? Do we have an answer? Is that person going to graduate or is that going to be up in the air because we just don't know?
One thing is the nine weeks ended.
Right.
So it's starting right now. They have no barrier right now. So if that ended the 13th, so that scenario, by the timing of the way we did this, will not carry over. Somebody's not in the third week or the fourth week or the fifth week of the nine weeks. They're, it ended kind of when it started, which does provide some clarity when you talk about where it starts, where it stops. Now, if that person, their average throughout.
That's what I'm referring to, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Until this point, I saw a 68.
Yes, sir. That's what I, I'm sorry.
Other than in the middle of the six weeks, what happens to that kid? They have to repeat the class? Is there any?
I know you may not know, so you may have to say, I just don't know.
And they have 68.
I'm just saying, yes, at this point, they have 68 at this point.
Keep it at 68.
Keep it at 68 at this point.
But we're providing instruction, so we're going to still bring it up.
We can't be, we can't be.
We are, we are going to use all of that data, if assignment's completed, as evidence of their progress and how they're practicing, what they're learning, so we can go talk to them.
It may not be as a big situation if we get to go back to school on April 19th, but this is a whole other call of wax for us if we are not able to come back because at that point their average was 68 and they were trying to.
I'm just thinking, I think at some point we would have to say, okay, we're going to put a graduation committee together. And we're going to see where this kid is, evaluate each one of their own merit. And because there's more to it than just a grade, or goes into what they earned in the class. So I think at that point, we'd come back and say, you know what, we probably need to get a group of people together to evaluate these tweeters kind of that are.
Because a lot of our kids already have enough credits well before their, even the end of their year.
They're tied for their year.
They've already got everything they need.
A lot of them, they've stayed required.
Right. Stay requirements a lot.
That's just a question the communities don't want to know. And we all basically at this point, we're thinking, could be a case-by-case basis.
What the community's asking, what the community's asking me, and I know he's asking everybody, they're asking everybody else, is I realize that we still have plans, we're working to go back to school on April the 20th. That's what I repeat over and over, we are working to go back to school on the 20th. If we don't go back to school on the 20th, then promise two weeks later, what do we, do we have an idea to schedule it for later in the summer, in the summer or a graduation commencement here at the stadium once these group meetings have been, the band has been lifted off of that? Have we even thought that far yet?
We don't have any answer. Yes, we've thought about it, but we don't have any answer. We can't answer that. And we're saying tentatively the 20th rather than absolutely. Tentatively planning on opening back up to 20th, but I can't say for sure. And we really can't say what we're going to do at graduation at this point.
So we'll just deal with that once we know when we're going back.
As we, as we progress, we'll come up with different ideas. But there's, that's the only thing that we love to deal with in absolutes, but in this whole scenario, there are no absolutes right now, other than what we know today, that change.
You know, Chrissy, the thing that bothers me the most is some, you know, we have such great teachers and, you know, there's so many things that the public may not even realize that, that we have to, A, that smiling face that treats them on the bus, that smiling face at the front door, that sets the tone for learning. That smiling face at the, at the cafeteria, that smiling teacher getting into that environment, everything almost has to be perfect in that environment to be able to get them ready for the learning side of it. And that's what's disappointing for me and there's nothing the district can do about it. You know, this, that whole factor's going to be gone during this period and these kids are going to get behind and there's nothing that, no matter what we do, it's going to take parent involvement. It's going to take parent responsibility for their own child to say, the school can only do this much. You're going to have to pick the ball up and help your child to continue to grow with all the support we offer in our school district. You know, because at the end of the day, parent responsibility has to come into play at some point and not say that the school district is solely responsible for how my kid's going to do during this factor. I can't get to every, I can't get to 50,000 kids or 10,000. So I think it's important that we let, that our parents know that you're going to have to pick the ball up, you're going to have to help us move it down the road to be, to help our students because, you know, it could take potential years for some of these students to get fixed again if something were to go into a full year and not be able to return back to the fall, you know, so.
I think that's a really, it's really a great opportunity though because we, we say that we're partners with parents and education, all this our education. This is going to be a great opportunity for parents and teachers to have a lot of dialogue and for parents to see where their kids are. I really think it could be a really good thing for our kids and our parents too and for our teachers because there's going to be a lot of involvement and a lot of conversation and pride obviously that's a good thing.
It is a good thing that the parents have the challenge themselves to get involved.
Yeah.
It shouldn't take the role of us to do that.
Nope. This is a situation to be able to grow from it, so we appreciate it.
Any questions?
I'm so impressed with how like quickly we've turned this out, we think about what it's been. So thank you for all of your efforts. I know that it's a really hard.
Yes, we do appreciate it.
Really amazing, really amazing team in our research department, our digital marketing, Greta, Greta Robinson, amazing. And all of our specialists have been working really hard. They were on Zoom last night at 9:30 laughing and talking about planning for this and they're pretty excited. So anyway, they've worked really hard, so thank you.
Say this, thank goodness the TRD passed and we had a one-on-one initiative implemented years ago that put us in a position to do this because a lot of districts don't have a one-on-one initiative where our students have access. And they're in a real, I think that is our community's supported us through that TRD years ago to provide as many laptops in the district as we have, puts us in a position for, as I've talked to students across the state, not many are in a unique position to any ISD is in to have access to the technology we have. So this type of situation really helps.
I also think this is something that will evolve, I'm sure, as we learn from this experience.
It'll evolve? That what you said?
Yeah, I mean, it's the first run in trying to, in one week, putting out distance learning programs, so I assume it will evolve, so. And I think that it's definitely something to grow from and we can look forward to for hopefully very few of these in the future.
Oh, my favorite person.
Hey, as Mr. Franklin mentioned a few minutes ago, we're going to continue on with the deadlines that we have for this year as well as the deadlines for preparing the church's budget. We've sent some emails out to the secretaries just reminding them of the deadlines today. I do have a plan in place for my staff. We will have to go into the office to work sometime, have to get invoices, we still pay bills and things like that, payroll has a schedule at full time and secretary's known with that, that is, if they don't have access to be able to log in, the payroll department's going to enter time for all of our districts based on the resolution passing tonight. So all that's in play. So all that to play, we're going to be forward, hopefully we'll have a budget workshop, I don't know if it'll be in person or not, on April sixth, because we do plan on writing the compensation plan on April twentieth. Like I said, we're still looking at funding for this year, that's going to be impacted, but as far as my department knows, we're working in groups so that we're not all there on time, and I know they're going to clean the buildings every night after we leave to disinfect, hope we will be up there some, but as much as we can be, we're going to work remotely, so we keep bills paid, payroll done, purchasing continuing on, we've got rights, we've got a finish going, you know, they don't care what's wrong right now, they still want the money spent or we lose it for next year, so we'll be continuing that, but we're just continuing business the best we can from remote locations and some in office. Questions?
Really don't have any because you just don't know.
Do we expect to be funding, or are there any funding changes this year, or this kind of a resolution discussion, or?
Well, like we just mentioned, we just got out today that whatever the instruction is, might have a funding implication for state funding. Before they kept saying, until just now, they said, don't worry, don't worry, don't worry. So it changes every day on how they're going to do the ADA.
Is that because of twenty twenty-one school year, or are we?
Well, hopefully we'll be back in school for twenty twenty-one, and there won't be any changes to funding other than what the legislation passed last legislation session.
Do we think we're dealing with it right now, other than budget workshop, comparing the budget for next year? We don't see any implications there, but we, there will be some implications.
Possibly.
This year. It's something.
Possible. Mr. Casper, how are you?
Good, good. Nice work. There are a lot of go with the medication, you had a phone call today that the nurses are going to be parents tomorrow with the school two different times. They also started reaching out last week when we knew we weren't coming, and a lot of them picked it up last week, so we'll see how it goes tomorrow with two different times they're picking it up at the campus. Report cards that you were talking about, those are finalized, someone out today through the portal, the rest of them will be finalized, and tomorrow will go out. Also through Mr. Castille's group, we're working on a plan right now for how to fulfill requirements for T-Ricks. We had a family who lived in Boston on the weekend, they wanted to join the schools, we're working on how we're going to do entry withdrawal, and we're getting all that together right now, and then also plans for these seniors that are asking for unofficial transcripts, how we're going to work some unofficial transcripts for right now, because we can't make them official yet. We're working on all those things right now, we just don't have a final plan for how we're going to get.
You also let Chief Blutin come up and speak about safety and security. That's it, unless there's a question?
Any questions?
Talk real brief, real briefly about law enforcement aspect of it. We're going to continue our law enforcement duties, protecting the property people and students. We will be assisting with the teachers coming up tomorrow at their campuses and picking up their stuff that they're going to be able to get. We're also providing security for food lines, traffic control, traffic correction, and such as may happen in an aspect. Secondly, my role, this particular incident, as the safety officer, is not only for what I just talked about, but also our administrators are under a lot of stress, they don't have to deal with crisis access a lot of times, and so I'm going to be responsible for, if I see something that may be unsafe, or maybe they just need a break or something, I will kind of pull them off to the side and see, you know, hey, you need a break, we need to do something along that line. Any questions?
Joe Nellie, Department of State Point, I met Coach Reeve and Coach Holly via video conference. I learned a lot about the video conference platform Zoom in the last couple of days.
Kenny didn't know nothing about Zoom before this.
I did not, my kids did. But I haven't learned a lot, and if I can do it, anybody can do it.
This is true.
That's good to know, that's good to know. Not tomorrow, but tomorrow.
We zoomed earlier this week, have another meeting in the morning with municipal staff, municipal coordinators, some of the high school staff, some of the office staff, and we're going to get a plan together. One of these coaches, we're going to take the kids at the bottom up in just smaller groups, and all the coaches interacting with these kids on a weekly basis, if not a daily basis. There's a lot of things we can do, even though we can't practice and play games, we've got a huge, both campuses have huge character education curriculums, and so we're going to really hit character education. Relationships are huge, and I'm one of these coaches building and maintaining and developing, continuing those relationships with those kids, talking to those kids, sometimes the kids tell the coaches something they won't tell anybody else, so if there's a problem at home, if there's a problem, you know, whatever it is, being there to assist those kids in that. Look at, talking about some conditioning, working on one-on-one basis, or individual conditioning, and so they're going to work on that as well. The trainers, I've got them, you know, the kids still have spring ankles and twisted knees, they can interact with those, monitor those, do some of that one-on-one via electronic platforms, nods, face-to-face, so we're going to continue to do that, and that will change and grow, but again, the main thing I'm focusing on and really emphasizing is character education and relationships for those kids, and continuing that through this process, because this is new to those kids.
So Holly and Reeve were both going to do spring football, we're certain they're not going to do that, but they used to do it eight days, because they're going to get up to spring football.
Yeah, U I L came out today, and again, this is a jingle for everybody, we have the U I L coming out this afternoon with new guidelines, they're going to resume, at this point, they're going to resume athletic activity for this year, starting May fourth. They still are adamant that the current scores that were in season will finish this year, I'm not sure how that will look, I think that's going to be very interesting when we talk about golf, and tennis, and baseball, softball, and how that's going to work. So I can't even tell you how it's going to look, but that's what they're saying right now, is we're going to start that on May fourth. So that will be a two-week acclimatization period, because again, these kids aren't doing as much as they have been doing, that's part of what we're going to focus on as well, and then we'll see. They may come back in another week and say, yeah, we're just going to call it here, I don't know. Right now, they're saying May fourth.
Any other questions?
Good question.
Mr. Zoom?
I'm glad you know I can do it.
Yeah.
Talking about facilities, very fortunately, after entering R B, we changed our chemical solutions, so we use clean, went to more stringent hospital-grade disinfectants. So basically, we've been using two tiers. In a normal course of the year, we do, we do a normal cleaning every day with these hard hospital creams, but we incorporated a lot of sixty machines like a year and a half ago. Basically, during the non-fluke rush, we spray your air, we dissipate the whole building. Fluke time, we come in, we do it once a week. Coronavirus started a month ago, we started doing it two to three times a week with these machines and disinfectants, and we're above the rate as far as any school around the area. We have students just calling, we're doing, and what we're using. So right now, we cleaned Monday and Tuesday, did a hard clean, planned to do right for first year of school, Tuesday we reduced, but it's effective, our machines are there.
Can you add, can you help me with the machine, how's that work?
Basically.
We walk into a room, we just set the room, the machine in the middle of the room, and it sprays, well, we sprayed it through, kind of have that process.
True process, we have a Clorox 66 machine, it's like a plug in, and it's got a wand, and basically it's got a magnet, you know, that magnet, I sprayed the top of it, it's a front of the stairs, it wraps itself underneath, and it's in the legs also. So we do that, we're using that here. About three months ago, four months ago, Coach Sykes talked to me about a wide lock side, he uses the same fill, different brand. We got that, it's battery packed, it's like a backpack, like you see with the vacuums, they put it on, it's battery operated, they go through and wash the same thing, we can do it over just for three hours.
So I'd like to challenge you, is with, with the use of Dr. Powers, can you get that for us in some sort of a simple little visual type of an application, so that our people, our parents and our students can see that we are actively taking care of our buildings, through some sort of a YouTube, he can get up, when he gets up, we can talk about that. I think that the more that we can show what we're doing, the better off we're going to be, because people don't realize how much work you guys have put in the last week. All they hear is bad, 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 but you guys have good, 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 and I think the more that we can be transparent, and the more that people can see, and they're, then they can wrap their around, their hands around, and these guys are really doing what they need to be doing to, you know, protect, that's very funny. We can talk about that.
How are we doing with supplies?
How's the toilet paper?
It's actually, with the new schedule this year, it worked out because about two weeks ago, I mean, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Coward talked about it, everybody else was on spring break, so when I called our vendors, nobody was placing orders. So I got, basically, we normally order a hundred, a hundred and twenty cases every two weeks of toilet paper, I have five hundred in the warehouse, and we're still full in our cans. So we probably, I'll probably, we're a total.
It'll hold a budget next year.
Clorox and cleaning supplies.
So the best thing, anything with Purell or Clorox on it, it's getting missed when it's going to come in, because everybody's trying to buy it up. We were forced to, we had some, we had some already in reserve, and it's weird, because when you look at the S D S sheets, and when they say Clorox cleaner, it could be Franklin cleaner, it's the same sheet. Clorox is sold out, the Franklin cleaner's got a thousand cases for us. So we usually utilize whatever they give you. If it's the same fill, it's going to be the same body.
And it's all hospital-grade, five dollars.
That's good. See, see if they have a list of what chemicals to use, what kind of products, we had seven of them in our, in our reserve already, we use everything.
Questions? That's good, thank you.
Good day, Mr. Steve, how are you?
Very good. Very grateful for hiring, so we're going to continue that process. You know, Ms. Pearson is looking at applications constantly, talking with the colleges that we have partnerships with. There were a couple of job fairs already in March, two or two, but we're going to use an online screening program in which we could get a candidate, or several, that can take a picture, a video with their camera or a device, and then that can be used by principals to view, and some questions will be asked, they'll answer those questions. And so that'll be a good way where principals can actually see the candidate, a video, and hear them talk about the things, their philosophy, which asks you different questions, the principals will help to, to, to provide for those candidates. And then they can use that time and follow that up with a phone call interview, so those things will be going on right now, and so Ms. Pearson's communicating with principals. We did this just a little bit last spring, kind of introduced that, and glad that we did enough to where now we can put that into play. Of course, my job fair is available, we'll see what's available there, but certainly we'll continue to try to hire the best people that we can, and the K is in a good spot. We have people applying and are trying to contact Ms. Pearson or others in H R, because they want to come here, so it's a good process to continue to use. And as was already mentioned, we did pass a resolution tonight, we'll get to that, prove it, then we'll get that information out to our employees this evening, so we have a lot of questions, of course, throughout the campaign, thanks for that, and so we're looking forward to maybe making do that as well. Any questions?
Can you give us quick links, an explanation about the resolution exactly, is telling our folks?
Well, just short, very similar to our previous resolutions, employees will receive pay.
On full time?
Employees will receive pay.
So we have been working through the incident command team, as we should have alluded to, and following through all our communications, incident response procedures. That puts us really into a mode of information processing and information dissemination. So we're collecting information, organizing it, we're writing, we're translating, we're trying to get messages correct, accurate, right. The second part of that is deciding how we share that information. So we use our notification system, we can use our websites, those are our most direct forms of communication, social media and media in a second. We rely heavily on our direct forms of communication and notification system and our website in this, in a case like this, because those two platforms go to everybody. So our notification system is a call, and it's an email, it could be a text, but we know it goes to every staple, and the website's accessible by every staple, so if somebody's looking for information, they can all go to the website. Secondary, we social media, we utilize that when we have something definitive, and then of course, local media, when that's appropriate. I've got some donors related to that, you know, we've done six calls around coronavirus, it's essentially about a hundred and eleven thousand phone calls, a hundred and forty-seven thousand emails thus far on our notification system. We set up a, an information page really early, very, very late January relating to this issue, and have updated it several times, and done some communication around that in the weeks since, traffic on that site, and we've built it into the health services webpage. Traffic on that site is up sixfold over the last four weeks or so from this time last year, so we know people are accessing that information. We utilize on the websites heavily the alert utility, so when you go to our website, and we can push this across the entire district, it forces people to see that message, it pops up, you can't access the website without seeing that message, and we can push that out just reply, so it's a really great way to utilize a website indirectly. We started subdividing information on that alert, because we're adding information to it, so we're going to continue to use that as it's appropriate. After we, this morning, some more immediate work, one of the things we need to get our minds around is how to collect questions and inquiries, organize that information, and then turn that back around, so we're pretty soon going to put a form out on the website that will allow people to submit questions and concerns. We need to develop a system for managing that, we'll develop a frequently asked questions page, we've got a lot for it already, and we can then turn that around and sort of envision that made in the following page, so that this goes three weeks or four weeks per week, or if it goes eight weeks or twelve weeks, then we've got a system in place where we can continue to update it and hopefully address issues and questions as they come up. We're going to work on a superintendent video, we should have something published by tomorrow noon. We'll use our E news platform to share information related to that, and we'll use that platform continually. You know, we do monthly newsletters traditionally, we'll continue to do that in some way, shape or form, but we'll do one pretty soon, probably early next week around this particular issue, so reinforcing some of the stuff we've already posted and shared, and then what develops over the next couple of days, and some immediate things we know we're going to have to do notifications over the coming weeks. Have to do with continuing educational services and what that looks like, and how we direct people to get information related to that, so we'll probably see something over the weekend related to that. We're also going to update the messaging around the meal service, the schedule changed a little bit starting this week, so we already posted that, but we'll probably do a call around the weekend too, in that transition period to the new schedule, and then whatever else comes up between now and then. We are going to, I'm going to work with Ben a little bit on what it might look like to do one of two things for board meetings, either live stream, in the instance that you're in a situation like this and we can stream it, or an option for a remote board meeting, what that looks like as well. Eric gave some pretty good information on the broad frameworks and that, but we need to work out a technical process for that, and then test it, make sure we're, we'll be open for it, and it's not the guys who need it. So we're going to work on that as well. And I just add something to my list, so that's all right, and we cover news and features all across the districts all the time, so if there are opportunities for us to cover some things in the way that traditionally you don't share that, but are public, then we'll do that, and that's not bad.
Even through the newsletter, I mean, a photo through the newsletter.
We talked about it.
Somebody wearing the backpack and showing that, that's a, this is what we're doing, how the process works, why it works, and just think of more information that we can give people that feel that we're working, I mean, we're actively working every day, you know, to provide services for our kids. working, I mean, we're actively working every day, you know, to provide services for kids.
Hold up for small attendance.
Sure.
They have a great platform.
Sure, it's great.
Good idea.
Good stuff. Anybody?
Just two little areas, the construction area, we do have the high school out on bid right now, a little bit off that. We had a pre-bid meeting this morning, again, that was a video conference meeting. Teresa said there was forty-one people on that hall, so definitely a lot of interest there. That bid will be open on April second. Working with one of our attorneys, Picky Morris, she's given us some guidance as far as opening that bid virtually, and what that process looks like, so those boxes will check. All of our other projects, those guys understand they're gonna go. They said Woodridge Forest, there could be a small delay in some delivery supplies, but overall, nothing to jeopardize opening that. That's all, some construction's looking good. One thing that came up this afternoon, I've been communicating with Warren a little bit about the ag barn, and what are we gonna do there? There's some animals there that are left on the Houston show and from the Denver County show, and so I'm just gonna read the recommendation, and this is one of those involving.
I did send it to all of them.
Oh, y'all have that already? That's gonna be. Basically, you know, he's just gonna limit access, and then when that second round of animals starts coming in mid-May, work with his teachers to develop the schedule, to supervise the animals, and he can do that watch day. Right now, he's still gonna work with those teachers to make sure we don't have any kids up there at the time, but that's gonna just be the active, the American action, so that way we can ensure we're, we get those animals needs met, get those projects needs met at the same time we, our global dialogue, starting gathering, so. So, Mr. Zoom, there's gonna be some more guidance and recommendations coming up from that. That's pretty much everybody. Like I said, as you said, there's a lot of work going on, a lot of great work going on these, are tough times, but definitely a shining town for our district and these folks behind me for sure. So we'd be happy to answer any questions we have now, or ask you to add, is this, do not farm, whatever, we'll be more than happy to get those responses to you, so we're ready to go ahead and.
Since on the agenda, did reports of the council, board members, we'll have three of those tonight. We're gonna start off with number one, Mr. Trout on our construction committee.
We discussed the replacement of this technology building with Mr. Rice and Morgan Architects, just because we still, or whatever happened to Kiefer, whatever happened to all that. We discussed the new high school and administration site, studying independent with Mr. Gates. Bond project, 2015, all projects are complete, and 2018, Kiefer Crossing in Woodridge. Kiefer site is in progress, and Woodridge is not in progress.
Next, we're gonna have Mr. Mason.
Yeah, we just wanna take this, this opportunity, this time to let, you know, let you know, you know, the K I S D board trustees understand that there's a lot of anxiety and uncertainty right now in our community, across the country. We want our students, our staff, our parents, and our community to know that the board trustees stand with you as we all face this difficult time. Along with the administration, the teachers, the staff across the district, the board is committed to providing continual support for our children, families, and employees. We greatly appreciate the efforts of our new K I S D staff, you know, who are working to provide the services for our students, and we applaud the larger community efforts to respond to our, and overcome this crisis. Our thoughts, our prayers, and our support are with everyone during this time, and we're very appreciative of what you guys are doing. And definitely want you to know that we stand behind you, and we stand behind the teachers and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. Up next on our financial committee, Ms. Sharp has a presentation.
The finance committee met February twenty-fifth. We discussed the nineteen-twenty revenue update. The district appears to be on track with projected revenue and average daily attendance is up. N E A budgeted was fourteen thousand seven sixty-five, and as of the meeting date, N E A was fourteen thousand nine seventy-two. The May stackin was discussed, and the additional revenue, the stackin will be increased and brought to the board for approval at a future board meeting. Michelle had discussed changes to the maintenance operation tax rate calculation. In late April, T E A is going to provide districts with their M and O maximum tier-one tax rate. The districts will then add back any prior tax ratification election pennies, if the district does not adopt the maximum tier-one rate, then the district's state penny will be reduced proportionally. Budget priorities were established with feedback from all members. The principals were given the opportunity to discuss current needs on the campuses as well. The priorities are to create a compensation plan that promotes the retention of current employees through pay raises and other compensation enhancements, while also allowing for the recruitment of the most highly qualified staff by meeting or exceeding current market wage rates. To be proactive in promoting a safe, secure, and orderly environment. To provide additional funds for capital outlay and a balanced budget.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Item on the agenda is consideration of consent counter, consideration of maintenance, consideration of financial report, consideration of purchasing report, and consideration of personnel report. Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent counter? Motion has been moved in seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed as no, the motion is approved. Item eight on the agenda is consideration of resolution authorizing of Woodridge Elementary Site purchase transaction, the conveyance back to seller. Mr. Cowherd.
Yes, sir, this is something we discussed previously. This is the site that we originally purchased to build an elementary school in the Woodridge Forest subdivision. They're expanding that, or they have planned to expand that, however, due to the flooding caused, I think it was by Melba, their county and other three talks to buy back that land and use it to mitigate flooding in the future. So with that said, we had the option to choose another site for development. We're basically back out of the building, get all our money back. Given the option, we thought it was in the district business interest to get our money back and potentially go look for another site, put that back in with bond twenty-fifteen funds, and go ahead and buy another project that those funds could be spent on. That's what we're asking approval or not, so if we can get out of that transaction, get our money back on that site.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve resolution authorizing decision of the Woodridge Elementary Site purchase transaction, conveyance back to seller?
No.
Motion has been seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed as no, the motion is approved. Item nine on the agenda is consideration of approval to a board agreement with Corgan Architects for the Architectural Services Design, Construct a New Technology Facility presented by Mr. Cowherd.
Yes, sir. Mr. Trout mentioned in our last construction committee meeting, we met with Corgan, saw their vision, their plans for that site, for the new technology center. Obviously, when the district moves off the track, keep the crossing site, our technology building is on that site. So the intent is to proceed from that sale, go to building this new technology center. So in conjunction with their people and Mr. Rice, we're designing that center within the budget of those funds, so that way we're confident we can know that this new building will address current needs as well as senior program. And so we identified Corgan as architecture firm to do that. Most recently, they did the word government patients at our elementarys out of the twenty-fifteen bond program, so very satisfied with their work, and looking to expand their involvement with us in the future. So we thought this would be a great opportunity to see what they could do on a full-built building.
So is this the, are they designing the building to be built in the site that we own by Valley Ranch?
Yes, I do.
And we could talk to, that we needed to talk to about any restrictions that we may have for that program?
We ran the, the need for everything, Mr. Anderson, look at that, we're confident we are, we're good to go.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve awarding agreement with Corgan Architects for the Architectural Services Design, construct the new technology facility? Motion has been moved in seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed as no, the motion is approved. Item ten on the agenda is consideration of resolution authorizing creating a new, new K I independent school district public facilities corporation, and approving articles of the corporation presented by Mr. Cowherd.
So over the past few months, we've had to look at different avenues that are available to the district in order to meet capital project needs for the buildings, buses, whatever, basically other funding sources. One of those is the creation of the public facilities corporation that, in fact, the district is sponsoring, that's what the resolution is creating that corporation tonight. Recent state changes in state laws, funding laws, funding mechanisms, they are making it tighter for school districts to get projects done within the parameters that they're expected to play. So this is just another option in our tool belt that we can use once we create this. If we so choose to use it, we can use this avenue to get other capital projects done outside of, you know, our M and O budget, outside of our bond capacity and things like this. So we thought that this is a very viable option at this time for us to form this corporation as a step one, as we move forward in the process of looking at other capital needs in the district.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve resolution authorizing the creating of new K I independent school district public facilities corporation, and approving the articles of the corporation? Motion has been moved in seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed as no, the motion is approved. Thank you, Ms. Cowherd. Item eleven on the agenda is discussing the potential to take action upon the administration recommendation to terminate the probationary and or non-chapter twenty-one contract of a teacher at Porter High School at the end of the contract year in the best interest of the district presented by Mr. Freeman.
So this is the administration's recommendation to terminate this non-chapter twenty-one contract, keep people at school, and continue the contract, and that's in the best interest of the district.
Are there any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the administration's recommendation to terminate the probationary and or non-chapter twenty-one contract with a teacher at Porter High School at the end of the contract year in the best interest of the district? Motion has been moved in seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Item twelve on the agenda is consideration of resolution affiliation, emergency and/or associated powers of superintendent and/or N E A designees.
Yes.
Does N E A need, there we go, lost that one. For purposes of crisis or energy, the emergency management in response to COVID-19 presented by Mr. Cowherd.
Yes, this is the resolution Mr. Nichols talked earlier about. Basically gives Mr. Franklin, or myself, the authority to address two big issues, which is employee pay, which is handled like we have in the past, and we have been closed or working from other locations. Basically saying we're gonna take care of our full-time employees through this period. It is an indefinite period, and so we realize that, so the length is in there about as long as we're in the state of emergency, we're gonna take care of our people, you know, again, the focus to come back to work. As long as we're in this situation, we're displaced, people are continuing to do their duties, we're asking you all for the authority to pay them as we see fit. There's some flexibility in there if it comes to, you know, premium pay, essential personnel pay, things of those, that nature. The other big piece of this is it gives us the powers to have some flexibility in purchasing, you know, if Mr. Carroll runs so, you know, prepared as we are now, and if we pull a paper, we see if we can get it, you know, we can kinda go around some of those typical person procedures that we have to go through by this resolution. So frees us up, gives us flexibility, takes care of our people, paying our people, as well as getting the supplies we need and handle what we need.
I have a question.
Yes.
Do you have an approximate number of the part-time employees? Give me an example of what part-time employees might do, or might be, like their job description?
There, there's not a number, I wouldn't know if Mr. Freeman has a part-time number. One of the, one of the groups that we've looked at is like ourselves and our long-term subs, you know, that would be an example of a temporary part-time person. Also, those two, you know, this time of year, we have two years coming up, and they're struggling to get ready for this. There is flexibility in here again for essential personnel. We've got some administrators filling in various campuses on a part-time basis, so we do have that flexibility as well. The two groups that I'm, there are two groups that are, so.
I feel like a pair of, that would be usually a full-time position.
Yes.
Like a bus driver.
Right.
Bus drivers.
Bus driver, tour staff.
Or terrorists, custodians.
Child nutrition, bus driver.
Any, anybody's measured as a full-time, one, F T, you know, there, anybody seems to fit, it's all that kind of thing, they're not temporary, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or further discussion? Is there a motion to approve resolution for the definition of urgency and/or associated powers of superintendent, or does it need? I still said, for a purpose of crisis or emergency management to respond to COVID-19. Motion has been moved in seconded, there being no further discussion, a vote will be taken. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you. There being no further discussion, the meeting is adjourned at eight oh seven.